Muchas gracias.
Buenos días, todos. Y una vez más, bienvenidos a la Cámara de la Ciudad y a las Camales del Consejo. Y a la reunión de la Cámara de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles, para hoy, el 8 de febrero de 2002. Ahora tenemos seis miembros presentes. Necesitamos diez miembros para un quórum. Las camales se celebran el martes, jueves y viernes a las 10:00 a.m., y el público siempre se invita a venir y participar. O observar aquí en la Cámara de la Ciudad. También pueden vernos en vivo desde casa en su estación de cable, la 35. Veremos en vivo mediante el webcast de la página web de la ciudad o escuchar mediante el teléfono del consejo. Ahora tenemos siete miembros presentes, y aunque tenemos un quórum, este siendo el viernes, como es costumbrado, comenzaremos con algunas presentaciones e introducciones por los miembros del consejo. En la conclusión de las presentaciones, si hemos llegado a lograr un quórum, el presidente encargará de hacer una motion para que se anuncie, sin embargo, no hay un quórum. Pero por ahora, el presidente quiere reconocer al Sr. Reyes, miembro del primer distrito, para una presentación. Buenos días. Gracias al presidente del consejo, a los miembros del consejo. Primero, les deseo a todos un feliz año nuevo lunar, 4700, el año del caballo, Genghis Khan. En los años pasados, he tenido el placer de participar en una variedad de celebraciones que reflejan las verdaderas riquezas de nuestra ciudad. Es mi placer hoy tener conmigo a la señora Ali de Chinatown, reina y jefe, 2002, así como al pequeño rey y reina de 2002 en la Cámara de la Ciudad. Cada año es mi placer ver este evento y celebrarlo. Esta celebración ha vuelto cada vez más grande. Para aquellos de ustedes que no participan o viven en Chinatown por algún tiempo, les invito a que vengan a participar en nuestro próximo paro de Chinatown. Cuando digo que es nuestro paro, porque este paro, aunque se celebra en Chinatown, realmente pertenece a todos los ángeles de Los Ángeles. Ha convertido en una fuente de tremenda orgullo para mí personalmente y para los residentes de mi distrito. Y para aquellos de ustedes que están escuchando, le pido que vengan a Chinatown porque es realmente uno de las joyas más preciosas de nuestra ciudad. Ha convertido a uno de nuestros juguetes y parte importante debido al trabajo duro de muchas personas, y en particular debido al trabajo del Consejo de Comercio. Básicamente, hemos estado trabajando duro para asegurar que este evento llegue a través. Hay muchas cosas que están sucediendo en esta comunidad, y los invito a que vengan a verlo por sí mismos. Una nota rápida sobre este año, el año del caballo. La gente nacida en este año son a menudo compañeros populares, compatriotas, amantes de la belleza. Son atentos a la pena y a los agradecimientos. Sin embargo, son frecuentemente salvajes y independientes, y frecuentemente fallan en terminar sus proyectos, así que hay positivo y negativo en todo. Con todo esto, por favor, permítanme ahora presentarles al presidente del Consejo de Comercio China, a alguien que tiene un tremendo respeto por Ada Chan Wong. ¿Ada?
Buenos días, damas y caballeros, y miembros de la Cámara de la Ciudad. Soy Ada Chan Wong y como presidenta del Consejo de Comercio de Los Ángeles, estamos muy, muy honadas de estar aquí hoy en las Camales del Consejo. El Consejo de Comercio ha sido creado desde 1955 en Los Ángeles y en Chinatown. Sin embargo, hemos estado expandiendo nuestra membresía, como saben, mucho más allá de los límites de Chinatown, y es por eso que nuestro nombre es el Consejo de Comercio. Sin embargo, nuestro corazón, nuestro hogar y nuestra herencia están justo aquí en Chinatown y en la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Tenemos muchas, muchas actividades durante los años, pero somos más conocidos por algunas de nuestras principales actividades alrededor del Año Nuevo chino. Como el consejero había mencionado, nuestro paro de dragones, el 133º, el 16 de febrero. Estamos muy contentos de tener nuestro propio consejo municipal, el señor Reyes, en nuestro paro, pero también estamos muy honados de tener al maestro de Los Ángeles, el señor Jim Hahn, como nuestro gran marchero. Además, nuestro gran marchero de celebridad este año es la primera reina de rosas chino, de la carrera de rosas, la señora Caroline Xu. Así que ella será nuestro gran marchero de celebridad en nuestro paro. Así que los invitamos a todos, cada uno de ustedes, a unirse a nosotros el 16 de febrero. También tenemos el Festival del Año Nuevo chino y el primer show de automóviles, todo el fin de semana. Además de otras actividades, recientemente hemos premiado a la señora reina de Chinatown de Los Ángeles, la señora, como pueden ver, están sentados aquí conmigo. Fueron a través de un proceso muy desagradable para llegar hasta aquí. Había más de... había más de 40, algo casi 50 candidatos, y tenemos 18 finalistas. Y las cinco chicas jóvenes aquí hoy representarán a la comunidad china para el año 2002. Estamos muy, muy, muy orgullosas de ellas. En este momento, les voy a presentar, pero quiero decirle un especial gracias a nuestro consejero municipal, quien ha hecho tanto por nosotros, por la comunidad china, especialmente por Chinatown. Hay muchos problemas que surgen, y nuestro consejero siempre está ahí para ayudarnos. Muchas gracias.
Ahora, miembros del consejo, me gustaría tomar este momento y presentarles a la señora Tiffany Liu de 2002, la señora de Chinatown de Los Ángeles. Me gustaría decirle algunas palabras y presentar al resto de mi coro.
Buenos días, damas y caballeros, y la Cámara de la Ciudad de la Ciudad. Mi nombre es Tiffany Liu y soy la señora de 2002, la señora de Chinatown de Los Ángeles. Y a cargo de la Comisión de Comercio China y mi maravillosa jefa, me gustaría decirles gracias por tenernos aquí hoy esta mañana. Gracias.
Tiffany, me gustaría proporcionar el certificado. Felicidades. Y tengo más certificados. Los daré en el trasero, pero también en los laterales con nuestra sala de fotografía. Pero en este momento me gustaría que Ada reintroduzca, introduzca a nuestro pequeño rey y reina. Por favor. Sí.
Me gustaría presentar al resto de mi coro, empezando con mi primera princesa, Jun Ting Tseng.
Buenos días, miembros de la Cámara de la Ciudad. Mi nombre es Jun Ting Tseng. Soy la primera princesa, y me gustaría desechar a cada uno de ustedes un feliz Año Nuevo chino. Gracias.
Buenos días, todos. Damas y caballeros, miembros de la Cámara de la Ciudad. Mi nombre es Tina Yao y soy la segunda princesa. Me gustaría desechar a todos un feliz año nuevo y decir que ha sido realmente un honor representar una cultura rica y integral parte de la comunidad de California, la comunidad china-estadounidense. Gracias.
Buenos días, damas y caballeros. Mi nombre es Ruth Chen. Muchas gracias por tenernos hoy. Es un gran honor estar aquí. Gracias.
Buenos días, damas y caballeros, miembros del consejo. Mi nombre es Tina Huang y soy de la ciudad de Walnut. Me gustaría tomar esta oportunidad de agradecerles todos por reconocernos y incluirnos en el desarrollo de los condios de los condados de Los Ángeles. Gracias.
Damas y caballeros, también tenemos otra festividad del Año Nuevo chino este año, como hacemos todos los años. Teníamos nuestro concurso anual de rey y reina. Y si me permito, presentar al pequeño rey, el Sr. Brandon Su, que tiene 6 años. Y nuestro pequeño reina es la señora Tiffany Chan, que tiene cinco y medio años. ¿Tiffany? Y nuestro pequeño príncipe es el Sr. Kevin Luck, que tiene seis y medio años. Y finalmente, nuestra pequeña princesa, la señora Amy Wong, y tiene siete años, acaba de nacer.
Muchas gracias, miembros del consejo. Y espero que todos estén escuchando. Por favor, tengan el tiempo de visitar Chinatown, disfruten de la fiesta y disfruten de nuestras festividades. Muchas gracias. Gracias al Sr. Reyes. El presidente reconoce al Sr. Pichello para una presentación.
Señor presidente, colegas, primero de todos, quiero decirles cuán difícil es seguir ese acto. Pero hoy estamos aquí para celebrar y comemorar un par de cosas. Primero de todo, como saben, cada año durante la temporada de Navidad, el Departamento de Servicios Generalizadores trabaja con uno de los hogares de mi distrito, el Shelter de Churnau, que se llama después de Alex Chernau, quien hizo una contribución significativa al shelter. Es un proyecto de la corporación de vivienda de Los Ángeles, una organización no lucrativa que es apoyada por donaciones privadas y públicas. El Churnau House proporciona un shelter temporal para 20 familias sin hogar y está ubicado en la calle 207 Norte, Baja Heights. Para aquellos de ustedes que podrían recordar la calle 207 Norte, esa es donde se fundó el Hospital de Cedar Sinai, originalmente en los primeros días de la comunidad judía de Baja Heights. Así que por favor, no vayan mostrándose allí para servicios médicos. En este momento, casa a 20 familias sin hogar. Las familias pueden quedarse 60 días sin costo alguno. Para ellos, es una transición que ofrecemos para que, con suerte, puedan entrar en vivienda permanente. Cada año, este es el 13º año, el Departamento de Servicios Generalizadores recoge juguetes, lo que llamamos barriles de amor para el Churnau House. Han hecho... 97 barriles se llenaron de ropa, zapatos, ropa, todo, desde ropa de cuelga, baños, juguetes, bolsillo. Además, el transporte generó 1,700 dólares en donaciones en efectivo. Esto ayuda a las familias necesarias a pasar por la transición de estar en la calle y, con suerte, encontrar una vivienda permanente. El Churnau House ha adoptado este shelter como uno de sus... perdón, el Departamento de Servicios Generalizadores ha adoptado este shelter como uno de sus proyectos cada año. Este año, el transporte fue dirigido por John McCree, el gerente general, y David Pichello, asistente general. Los miembros del comité que hicieron un esfuerzo máximo fueron Ali Taylor, Carlos Portillo, Terrence William, Eric Robles, Gregory Torres, Ignacio Valdivia, Joe Obre, Michael Stewart, Nick Pendorf, Raúl Macías, el presidente Bruce, Wavy Alloway, Wayne Wright, y William Isen. Así que a cargo de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles, en nuestro oficina, quería agradecer al Departamento de Servicios Generalizadores por ser amable y contactar a los menos fortunate este año con su transporte anual de Churnau House. Así que quiero presentarles a todos ustedes. ¿Quién es el portavoz? Bien, bien, bien. Así que a cargo de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles, gracias por ser amable y gracias por ser parte de la comunidad con nuestros constituidores.
Es un placer para el Departamento de Servicios Generalizadores estar aquí esta mañana. Hemos trabajado 13 años para trabajar con la juventud y las familias sin hogar en Baja Heights. Nuestro gerente general y nuestro personal y nuestro comité han trabajado muy fuertemente para apoyar y ayudar a las familias sin hogar en esa comunidad. Un hombre es muy alto cuando se sube a ayudar a un niño y a una madre con sus hijos. Nosotros apoyamos a ustedes y a su esfuerzo, y vamos a continuar apoyando a las familias de Baja Heights. Muchas gracias.
Señor presidente, colegas, quiero mencionar a uno de nuestros retiros, y siempre es un momento dulce cuando reconocemos al retiro porque sabemos que estamos lidiando con una persona que está muy comprometida con el servicio público. Así que déjenme mencionar a Daniel Woodard. Al mismo tiempo, permítanme pedirle a Tim McCosker de la oficina del maestro para unirse a nosotros aquí. Déjenme darles un poco de contexto a Daniel. Estamos aquí para presentarle a Daniel con su resolución para su retiro de la oficina de abogado de la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Después de 25 años de servicio dedicado, Daniel ha litigado más de 100 juicios para la ciudad. Empezó su carrera como abogado legal para la División de responsabilidad civil de la oficina de abogados de la ciudad en 1976. Al recibir extensa experiencia como fiscal en la División Penal, se trasladó a la División de Responsabilidad Civil, donde fue consejo legal para el Departamento de Harbor y el Consejo de Comisiones de Harbor. Daniel fue nombrado juez de abogado en 1993 y fue instrumental en la administración y gestión de la División de Responsabilidad Civil. De hecho, Daniel fue nombrado asistente de gestión de la División de Responsabilidad Civil en 1995. Además de sus logros, ha luchado con el desafío inminente de la madera, superar obstáculos como la corte, el cuchillo, y el arco de rato ocasional. No estoy seguro de qué es, y yo soy golfer. Así que antes de hacer nuestra presentación, déjenme ir a la oficina del maestro y luego presentaremos nuestros certificados. Gracias, consejero. No hay mucho que añadir a eso, pero unos de nosotros estamos aquí desde la oficina del maestro porque...
because we love Dan, but also because we work so closely with him. Roberta, Carmel, and Brian and I are here representing the mayor. The mayor very much would like to be here himself, but he will have an opportunity to offer his own warm wishes for Dan, who has provided years and years of service to the city and to the people of Los Angeles. And of those 100 trials that he performed, more than 100 trials and all of the services he performed, nothing is more impressive than the fact that he actually umpired the picnic softball games between the Criminal Division and the Civil Division, and very few fights broke out. In fact, in my final year, he actually asked me to umpire the game, and I could not believe how difficult it is. And I am, I will continue to be impressed with the skill of Dan Woodard.
We also have a representative from the City Attorney's Office,
Good morning, everyone. Terry Bowers, on behalf of Rocky Delgado. And we want to extend our best wishes to Dan as well. He is the consummate trial attorney, was outstanding in the courtroom, and set a tremendous example just by the way he tried cases. And as a supervisor, he was invaluable. Many of the attorneys that go into court on a daily basis on behalf of the city have been trained by Dan. And I'm sure if you calculated up the money that he's saved this city, it would be in the millions and millions of dollars. We're going to miss him very dearly. During the transition, he was of immense assistance to us. When you come in and you have to get a crash course on what the office does, you really appreciate someone who can come in and concisely explain how things work. And Dan was just invaluable in getting us up to speed quickly. It's a huge set of shoes to fill. We may have to have several people fill those shoes. We're going to miss him dearly, and we wish him the best of luck. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Ms. Msicallo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate hearing the words from Dan's peers, and I am also really impressed. I'd like to have all those in the background here for Dan to stand up because I think a number of his colleagues did come today from the City Attorney's Office. This is a really, really good presentation. And among your peers, you are respected and admired. But let me tell you from this side of the aisle, the non-attorneys, as much as you've done in terms of supervising and being the umpire for your team, when you've come here and presented cases to the council in our executive session most often on settlement issues, you are clear, you are concise, you answer questions, you are knowledgeable about the case, and very, very able in persuading the council as to what the reasonable and useful position should be. So I think you are going to be missed from both sides of the aisle. And I think that I've not seen often this many people come from the City Attorney's Office to pay their respects. And you are very much going to be missed. Thank you for the work you've done.
Ms. Galanter.
I'm going to say a variation of the same theme. What I've always appreciated so much about you in your presentations, your post sessions, is that you know how to get to the point. And many attorneys take a while leading up to it because when you argue a case in court, you have to go through this long progression. But I think your skills at understanding who your audience is and what they really need to know are really remarkable. And I hope that you will find a way to transfer those skills to others who will come after you, formally or informally. It's really been a pleasure to work with you, and I certainly wish you all the best. And I'm sorry you're leaving.
Mr. President, for those of you keeping score at home, we think we've come down with the ruling from the judges on what a backwards rock carom is. I believe that's when you hit the golf ball, and it hits a rock, and it goes backwards instead of forward. That's what has been explained to me. So let me bring up Daniel Woodard, and he can give us some clarity on that ruling and continue doing some service to us here in the city. Daniel, come on up.
The carom shot only happens one time. That's a bad rap. But thank you very much for the very nice, warm things you've said. I really appreciate it. It's been an exciting 25 years. I couldn't have asked for a better career. And I leave here with the warmest of feelings for the city of Los Angeles, the City Attorney's Office, and certainly for this chamber and what goes on here. It's really been a pleasure. Thank you very much.
And we also have these parting gifts for you. A nice resolution from the city council recognizing your 25 years of dedicated public service. So on behalf of the city council in the city of Los Angeles, I'd like to present to this resolution to you, Daniel, for doing such a good job.
And from the mayor, a smaller but heartfelt resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. The chair now recognizes Ms. Galanter for presentation.
Thank you, members of the council. This is another one of those farewell resolutions. I see more of my staff coming up here. I'm here today to ask you to join me in recognizing and thanking Tony Fitzgerald, who worked in my office for about four and a half years and has developed a reputation among my constituents as the guy who can solve the problem that the traffic department has not yet solved. And I know it's exhausted you. I've seen you enough where you've been really exhausted. But Tony not only can figure out how to solve the problem, but he manages to stay polite through it all, which is the real skill. And so we all knew him as the guy who took care of traffic problems and a number of other problems for the field office and for my constituents. But in his other life, he also has been very involved in arts in our city. And so just kind of for kicks, he helped us get funding for a number of different arts projects. And now we're losing because after four and a half years, you can get a little worn down from this kind of thing, as many of you know and have seen other people experience. And Tony has gone off to a job that he only thought he got tired at our job. Well, you've been on this one for a little longer. Tony is now working with Chris Harrison Associates, and he's back on a number of the same projects, but playing a slightly different role. And Tony, I can only say thank you for your hard work, not only in doing your job, but in helping other people on the staff as they came on, learn how to do their jobs. There's a terrible problem of continuity in this city, and it's going to get worse. And so we should all be really grateful when we have staff members who take it upon themselves to help train other staff members so that the future generations gain the experience of the previous generations. And Tony has been joined here today by his sister. Thank you for coming. And a number of current and former members of my staff. We haven't decided whether they wanted to make sure he's leaving or whether they wanted to actually thank him. But since he already left, I expect they really wanted to thank him. So Tony, we have a very long resolution, which as a special favor, I'm not going to read. But basically, what it says is, "Thank you so much for your hard work. It was really, it's been a pleasure working with you. I look forward to working with you in your new job because I know we're going to have some overlapping projects. And come on back any time. We'll be happy to feed you lunch and make sure you're okay." So this is for you. Does anybody else here feel compelled to say that? That's good. Your turn.
Thank you. I'm just overwhelmed with a lot of gratitude, and I have a lot of just thank yous. Thank you to the council member for allowing me to be of service in the district office for four and a half years. Your guidance, your experience, your counsel, wise counsel on some of our, and your sense of humor, great stories, helped me through a lot of sticky situations with our constituents, many of whom I got to know really well while I was there. And I'm grateful for the opportunity. Second, I'd like to thank the staff. I was in tremendous company. And to those of you who are here and those of you who are not here, thank you very much for your support. And last, but not least, my sister Kim is here. And without your love and support, I would be nowhere. So thank you very much. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And now I'd like to ask Councilmember Han to join me. Where are you? There you are. We have the joint opportunity to recognize Police Officer Jared Yocum. Where are you? Right here. Did I say it right? Yocum. Okay. And the reason we have the joint honor, and I think you will all join us as well, is that this gentleman started out as an airport, well, I don't know if he started out, but he was an airport police officer, and he's now a harbor police officer. And we are recognizing him today for doing something that demonstrates both the dedication and the versatility of our public safety resources here in the city of Los Angeles. There he was, an airport police officer. And he got flagged down by somebody in Redondo Beach who said, "There's a building on fire." And Officer Yocum jumped out of his car, ran into the building three separate times to make sure there was nobody in there. Luckily, there was nobody in there, and he was able to come out. Now, it wasn't his jurisdiction. It wasn't his job. Firefighting is not his specialty, but he did it all anyway. And we wanted to acknowledge the fact that you're obviously good at what you do. And what you've done is really important for not only the people who might have been in there, but for all of us and as an example to others in public service and others who may be thinking about getting into public service. There's plenty of need. There's unfortunately, plenty of work to do. And Officer Jared Yocum is an example of the kind of person that we want to see more of. So before I give you this, we're going to hear from a few other people. Ms. Han?
Thank you, Councilwoman Galanter. And I'm pleased to also be here today to honor Officer Yocum, who, as you said, was an airport police officer and now is one of our wonderful port police officers. Sorry we stole him from the airport, but...
Hey, we share.
But you know, I think this, we've had so many great stories really since September 11th of heroes in our public safety and law enforcement agencies who do what the rest of us probably would not do and run immediately into a dangerous area, not thinking of your own life, but thinking of the possibility of saving another. And the fact that you went in two, three times into a burning building looking for someone is amazing. And then stayed around to make sure that when the firefighter showed up, you gave them all the information that they needed to also go into the building. So I also just want to give special recognition to our airport police officers and our harbor port police officers. I think, if anything, since September 11th, these two agencies have really gotten the deserved recognition and support that possibly in the past has not been given to you as you were two agencies that might have been overlooked in the public's eye. And we appreciate what you do every single day. So thank you, Officer Yocum.
And not only that, we're very proud of you. Any of the Reflected Glory Command staff here want to say anything? All right. Well, in that case, let me present you with this from all of us here at the city council. We're very proud of you and hope you don't have to do it again, but no, we can count on you.
The city council, a little thank you. I appreciate this from both my partners at the airport and now my partners at the port. But I want to remind people, while we're here, I'd like to thank my family, especially my brother who's overseas. He's a captain in the United States Army, helicopter pilot, fighting with the rest of our troops to keep us safe here, to give us the opportunity to be here doing what we're doing right now. And I'd like to thank my other partners that are on the streets with us here. I had some partners that couldn't be here, but there's some people that have taught me how to be a good police officer. I'd like to thank Officer Nua, who happens to be sitting in the back. And Officer Tom Nury, Mike Lott, Lieutenant Alan Chu, Captain Green. And then I'd like to thank Captain Tracy in the port police for taking me on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Galanter. The chair now recognizes Councilmember Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair, colleagues. It's my pleasure to announce, as we do every year, here in the city council chambers, National Engineers Week. And I will be presenting a resolution and some certificates to leaders from the engineering community here within the city of Los Angeles and throughout the city of Los Angeles. This year's Engineers Week is celebrated from February 17th through the 23rd. It will include a number of activities that we look forward to every year, including an awards banquet and tours of some of the most significant, highly visible engineering projects over the course of the last year. This year's Engineering Week activities are hosted by the Institute for the Advancement of Engineering and its affiliated organizations, including the College of Fellows, the Los Angeles Council of Engineers and Scientists, Orange County Engineering Council, and the Consulting Engineers and Licensed Surveyors of California. Collectively, these organizations represent about 40 engineering and technical societies and over 100,000 members in the Southern California area. There are a few individuals and distinguished guests who stand here with me that I would like to recognize, including Dr. Sam Saram, President of the Institute for the Advancement of Engineering, David Wagner, President of the College of Fellows, Stan Cizik, our Inspector of Public Works and past President of the Institute, Stacy Jones, our harbor engineer and the chairperson for Engineer Week this year, especially Vin Troy, our city engineer, Brad Smith, our deputy city engineer, and Ed Adila, Executive Director of Project Restored. This year, the city of Los Angeles is very well represented in the awards banquet and the award recipients list from this year's banquet. The city of Los Angeles will be receiving several honors, including the following. Mr. Ed Adila will be receiving the prestigious Frank Reeves Memorial Award for his exceptional service in engineering and interdisciplinary endeavors. As we all know, Ed's been very, very involved, Director of Project Restored. This has been a tremendous year for us with the reopening of the city hall. Our city engineer, Vin Troy, will be recognized as Engineer of the Year, an award I once dreamed about. But I'm glad somebody in the city family is going to be able to show that off. Our chief deputy city engineer, Mr. Brad Smith, will be honored with an award for leadership in engineering. Mr. Rosania Rojo from the Bureau of Engineering, as well as James Brown and Angel Lim from the Harbor Department will receive Outstanding New Engineer Awards. And the Project of the Year honors for this year will be presented to the city of Los Angeles, highlighting the city hall restoration and reconstruction project. At this point in time, I'd like to call forward Dr. Saram to accept this city council resolution signed by all members in honor of National Engineers Week.
Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the Institute for Advancement of Engineering, I would like to thank the council and appreciate the fact that you do recognize the engineers and what they do. Of course, without them, it would be very difficult to have such a magnificent city here. So again, I thank you all, and I'd like to particularly thank Stacy Jones, who is leading the Engineers Week activities. And she has done a marvelous job in setting up the banquet that we are going to have on the 16th of February. And I'd like to invite all of you to come and attend that and help us celebrate the activities. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to say a word?
Thank you. We also have Mr. Ock.
I'd first like to say that it is an honor, as the Chief Harbor Engineer for the Port of Los Angeles, to serve as the Chair for this year's Engineers Week for the Institute for the Advancement of Engineering. And I'd especially like to thank the Council President, Councilman Padilla, and the council for recognizing the accomplishments and in participating in the celebration of engineers and the improvements to the quality of life the engineers bring to this city and the nation. It's not too many people think about when they flush their toilet, or turn on the water, or get in their car to drive to work, or think about all of the imports that come into this city and to the world through the Port of Los Angeles. It's not often that we think about that. But we definitely, engineers in this country, provide for a higher standard of living and a quality of life. And so I challenge and I encourage all engineers and educators in this country and in this city to provide the tools of our youth to make a difference in this world and to become engineers. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good morning. I would like to thank the council for recognizing Engineers Week. I would like to thank the council for its wisdom in electing an engineer as its president, Councilman. And I would also like to mention the fact that this city is very fortunate in that its engineers are not just people who sit behind desks and operate slide rules—for those of you who remember what those were, calculators, computers, CAD systems—but they're also the kind of people who are currently making an outreach to all of our high school students, who are going to the schools, who are sponsoring bridge-building contests, catapult contests, and various other activities to mentor students and encourage them to enter into engineering. And I'm particularly pleased that Ms. Rosalia Rojo was recognized as an Engineer of the Year, because any of you who have flood insurance can thank her for the fact that you will be receiving a 10% discount on your flood insurance, thanks to the work that Ms. Rojo's done.
Thank you. Mr. President, we also have—the chair recognizes Councilmember Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, our great city engineers. Yesterday, we celebrated the 100th anniversary of the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, and that great engineer, William Mahalan, that Irish immigrant, and all those who came before after his leave of helping bring this water and the aqueduct to the city. And today, our President, Alex Padilla, brings forth our core engineers, and there's so many great ones there. And I congratulate our deputies, all the deputy engineers, but also our city engineer for being named Engineer of the Year. That's a special honor. Let's give Mr. Charlie another hand for that. But I love the encouragement of the deputy city engineer in charge of the harbor and all that work that you're doing for the port. That's wonderful words, what you spoke about encouraging young people to look at engineering as a career. But I also want to just say, too, what's so important here, and I've said it before on these council meetings, in the 1920s, there was a city beautiful movement, and there was a concept to separate the railroads that ran right up to the river and make the gateway into Los Angeles and the great bridges that cross the river, Los Angeles, more unique and special. And Merrill Butler was the deputy city engineer who drove that for the city of Los Angeles, and these are now have been restored. And back behind the shy guy standing in that group of folks is the deputy city engineer, Clark Robbins, who has driven the fact now to restore all the bridges, thanks to the motors of Los Angeles and the propositions to restore and make these bridges earthquake-proof. But we've had the unique opportunity to make right in restoring these bridges. So all the city engineers, I want to salute, and Clark Robbins, I want to salute you because you've been a driving force in efforts to restore all the historic bridges. And soon, they will restore the historic and the one that Merrill Butler thought was the most famous, the Great Hyperion Bridge that goes from Silver Lake to Atwater Village, from the 4th District to the 13th. We look forward to that work. Thank you all very much, and thank you, Mr. President, for bringing us to our attention.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have certificates for the individual standing behind me. I'd like to present them to them. But colleagues, we stand here day in, day out, week in, week out, and we talk about housing, and we talk about transportation, and we talk about construction, and we talk about public works and infrastructure, and we talk about so many things to improve the quality of life in the city of Los Angeles. As has been said, let us not forget that behind any successful project, behind all these needs and challenges, there's an engineer, there's an architect out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you to the engineers. Mr. Clerk? Should I call the roll?
Members of the Senate, Glandre Garcia, Han Holden Labange, Ms. Kousk, Pacheco Perry, Reyes Billy Thomas, Vice Signee Padilla, ten members present in the form. Madam President.
Council is in session?
Approval of minutes.
Mr. Labange moves. Mr. Garcia seconds.
Commendatory resolutions.
Is that it?
Madam President, I have an item to read into the record today. It's the announcement of bid. On Wednesday, February 6, 2002, at 9:00 a.m., the city administration officer opened bids for the sale of special tax lease revenue bonds for the municipal improvement corporation of Los Angeles's Emergency Command Control System pursuant to council authority of February 1, 2002. The total number of bonds sold is 52,325,000. The winning bidder is Borgen Stanley &amp; Company Incorporated, at a true interest cost of 3.688%.
Matters presented?
Madam President, on the regular agenda, items numbers 1 through 10 are items which public hearings have not been held. A motion is required on number 2 inasmuch as two reports on one file.
Members—any items be called special? Items 1 through 10? Members, we do have—okay, item 1 is called special. Let's call two specials since a motion is required. So the remaining items are 3 through 10.
Item number 10, please.
Reyes calls number 10 special.
Allegia with 3 through 9.
3 through 9, members, 3 through 9 are before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. 10 ice. All right.
There's a request from Council District 10 for Council District 9 to continue item number 29 one week, which would be February 12.
Item 29 is continued for one week?
Excuse me, February 15.
The other items?
Items numbers 11 through 30 on the regular agenda, items which public hearings have not been held.
All right, we have a card on item 24, so we will call that special.
Councilmember?
26. Okay, now is the time for public to speak on any of the other items if they're interested. Items 11 through 20—was that 29?
20D, please.
20D. Seeing no other members of the public wanting to speak on those, we will close the public hearing. And any other items, members, to be called special, 11 through 30? Seeing none, we will open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. 10 ice. Mr. Clerk?
Let us—brings us back to item number 1 called special by a Councilmember Weiss.
Members, we also have a card on this item. Since the public hearing has been held, we need a motion. If the public hearing is to be opened to allow speaker, is there a motion? Seeing no motion, the chair recognizes Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, we have a chance today with this ordinance to, for the first time, take significant action against illegal billboards in this city. We had this ordinance before us last week. We had a debate about it. We've been talking about this for the last month. But this is our chance as a new city council to, once and for all, make a real mark on this city, make a real mark in its laws against billboards and against billboard blight and visual blight. This is our chance to stand up and make public policy here. There's been discussion for months and years and years about different alternatives. But this one will, once and for all, give us the resources we need to act against illegal billboards and to finally come up with a comprehensive inventory of what billboards are and are not in this city. One other thing we're going to do is we're going to empower citizens to take actions themselves by learning which billboards are legal, which are illegal, and which ought to be called into building and safety. This ordinance establishes an annual inspection fee, which will pay for a comprehensive program of civil enforcement by Building and Safety and the City Attorney's Office. It will require the billboard companies to come forward with the permits, the terms and conditions of how they acquired the permit to put up their billboard. It'll give us the first opportunity to figure out which of the 40% that's estimated of the 10,000 billboards we have in this city are not in compliance with the terms and conditions of their permit, or which are outright illegal, and for the first time, we will have the resources we need to act against them. We've been talking about this for an awfully long time, but today is the second reading of this ordinance, and it is finally time for us to act. So I encourage all of you to act and to stand together as a council in taking action against the proliferation of illegal billboards and visual blight in this city.
Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, I was simply going to ask that we reconsider item 21 at some point, so when we get to that part.
Any other members wishing to speak on item number 1? Let's see, none. Leave it ready for a vote. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ice.
That matter is approved. Forrest Weiss. Next, I believe Mr. Pacheco has a motion for reconsideration.
Colleagues, I'd ask that we reconsider item 21. This is the opening of the bridge between the two buildings.
Motion for reconsideration of item number 21. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ice.
Item 21 is reconsidered. Please call that special and take that in the appropriate order. Next item, please. Item number 10, called special by Councilmember Reyes. Item number 10, Mr. Reyes.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I stand up to make a verbal amendment to the motion, essentially requesting the planning department to provide the CLA's office with report within two weeks on its role relative to facility renovation and construction programs alongside this committee college district and the alley unified school district. Essentially, I'm trying to get a clear picture of how the city is interacting with these two entities in our process of developing these schools, so I'd like to request this amendment to the motion.
Okay, any other members wishing to be heard on the item or the amendment? Is there any objection to accepting that as a friendly amendment? Seeing none? That matter is so amended. Item number 10, let's open the roll. Item number 10, as amended. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ice.
Item 10, as amended, is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 2, we call it special, inasmuch as two reports on one file. A motion is required from the floor.
Item 2 now before us, Ms. Msikowski.
Mr. President, I move the adoption of both the reports, public safety and budget finance. They are consistent with each other on the clear program, so I move both.
Okay, any other members wishing to be heard? Item number 2. Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ice.
That is approved.
So budget finance report is approved, and public safety is received and filed.
Next item, please. Item number 20D, called special by Councilmember Reyes. Mr. Reyes.
Yes, I'd like to receive and file that.
Okay, motion to receive and file, item 20D. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ice.
Item 20D is received and filed. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number 21 called special as reconsidered by Councilmember Pacheco. Mr. Pacheco, item number 21.
Mr. President, colleagues, I am in full support of the concept of reopening the bridge. I'm also in full support of Mr. Labange's motion, which was to bring down the barricades. However, I just found out that the reopening of the bridge may have a fiscal impact that has been looked at. So I simply would like to request that before we approve it, and if we're going to talk about money, and we're going to talk about the Civic Center and City Hall, I think we should consider everything in one conversation. How much savings would we have if we removed the barricades? And with those savings, could we then pay for reopening the bridge? I mean, those are the kind of questions we need to have put on the table and discuss. I just want to make sure that we do that before we make a decision on just the bridge.
Mr. President, I would suggest that we extend to committee. There's two reasons. One is there is a financial implication to opening the bridge, but at least as important is that we're in the process right now of demolishing the third floor, redesigning it. Access from the third floor is problematic, and would Bureau of Engineering believes have a problem with construction? I think that we could send back to committee, we could look at reopening the bridge. I would—my personal recommendation would be that we do it, we would reopen once the construction's over, in any event, and that would be probably in the September timeframe anyway. So anyway, we would—I would recommend you send this back to Senate Budget and Finance.
Okay. Chair recognizes Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. I support putting it all together in one package. But just like this great Civic Center that was put all together in one page, we must put this barricades down and open it up so people come here and celebrate this government and this City Hall, because access to the seat of government in Los Angeles is impeded. More work that I've done in my 25 years, I got done between one side of Main Street and the other, walking across that bridge and bombing into an engineer from street lighting, or engineer from another sanitation, or a police officer, someone who was working the access that is necessary to maximize all our energies each day as a body of workers for the people of Los Angeles.
Now you can bump into them in the line.
Say it again?
Now you can bump into them in the line to get into City Hall.
No, 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 I know. But anyway, I also wanted to ask General Services one question. Have you gone over to the Wells Fargo Building on Grand Avenue to see their security? Would you please go over? Because they have security, and people work in that high-rise, and they go by, and they flip it, and it beeps, and then they walk through, there's no gate there, and those who don't get a guest pass. I think we should look at it, because I've heard from city employees who've complained that their work and their ability to get into work has been impeded by that. But I also think we should all put this together and come back, but I think our—and I hope, I truly hope, the outcome of this is to open this building up, to open up Main Street, to open up Los Angeles Street, and bring people back to the Civic Center like we all want, and people to come. And schoolchildren, schoolchildren don't come here like they used to, because it's too difficult. Tourists don't come in here like they used to, because it's too difficult. We must open this building back up for everybody. Thank you.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to tell you, gentlemen, I know it's—I know you've been working very hard on this matter for several months, and I know that there are security concerns that have legitimately been raised with respect to security in the central city area. But I—I'm very persuaded by Mr. Labange and Mr. Labange's views on this issue. As far as I'm concerned, the time has come for us to not debate this issue of which streets are blocked off and how they're blocked off any longer. We need to come up with a plan that all of Los Angeles finds workable, that doesn't unnecessarily drain our resources, and that frankly, in my view, does—
unnecessarily drain our resources, and that frankly, in my view, doesn't provide the Civic Center with real meaningful security anyway. So we're discussing the bridge here today. I just want to put you all on notice that as far as I'm concerned, the time has come, and the time is long overdue, to, to remove the massive barricading that we've seen around all of these buildings, and to come up with a better long-term strategy that costs less for providing security in this area.
We've been telling you to include from General Services, we've been working with the Police Department, Fire Department, and other members of the Emergency Operations Board for the past several months, and the Emergency Operations Board has developed a fairly specific plan on this, on these issues, and has submitted to the mayor. It should be forthcoming from the mayor's office to council, I would say, next week. It should be, should be under consideration by ITGS and Public Safety in the very near future.
We need, we need to move that through, and I know Mr. Labonge will be looking at it, and I'll be looking at it very closely as well, because I, I mean, we've, we've been dragging our heels, and frankly, what, what some people in the city don't understand, or the city government don't understand, is that this sends precisely the wrong message to the people in this city. The message that is being sent is that we care more about protecting this area, and we care more about it in terms of resources and dollars than we do about providing real meaningful security against terrorism for the rest of the city. And that's not how I feel about it, but I think it's sending that message out to people in the city, which is very counterproductive, and it's ultimately, I don't believe, really providing meaningful security for this area anyway.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, the question I have on this, the federal building north of City Hall, they've got barricades without a lot of stationary guard positions. Los Angeles Street, San Pedro Street, they've got LAPD officers who are being taken out of the field, where we desperately need them, to screen cars round the clock, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I support redesigning, remodeling. I think it would be practical, not only open the bridge, but we put parking restrictions, no stopping anytime at center. Some roving patrols can maintain that so someone doesn't park something in a situation that could cause injury or damage. And I think that when I drive down and see three and four of the contract security folks guarding a door where no one is entering or exiting, we need to reevaluate that. So my support would be to redesign it so we have a safe environment. I think keeping Los Angeles Street blocked, San Pedro Street blocked, Main Street blocked is not only causing great inconvenience, but as others have said, it sends the wrong message. I think we can still have the enhanced security we need with the resources that we have. I know additional personnel have been approved for different departments for that purpose. I think there's, like in my district office, we have private security, which we discontinued because there was no longer a need for it. So I support this remodeling, and oftentimes, we let things go until someone brings up an issue. And I read an article that the Controller or a chick brought up. I don't know if that's what prompted this to come about today, but I think we really need to redesign it to make it efficient and make it effective. Additionally, there was some concern about the metal detectors coming off of Main Street, and they were supposed to be historical in visual appetite or something to that effect. I don't know what happened with that project. Additionally, when I hear what they're doing with the airline industry, what the federal government's talking about, for our employees that work in this building, maybe they go to lunch across the street, and then they have to come through the security screen again, maybe we need to somehow identify those folks and have an express route for them so they don't have to stand in line and wait, go through the metal detector if they're coming back and bringing their lunch with them. I mean, they are employees of this facility, and I think other than council members, everyone has to go through that, and I think we need to redesign that also. I do support the security at the entrance, but I think that it's time that we reevaluate and we come up with something more appropriate. My question, can we do something for the employees of this building, for some express to go in and out, also about the historical detectors or some modification they're going to do at the main entrance? Can you answer that?
Yes, we can, and as we report back to the committee, we will, we will report back on those issues.
Are you working in conjunction with LAPD for San Pedro, LA Street, and the feds across the street?
Correct.
Ms. Miskowski.
I think everything's been said. I think the council is growing impatient. We need to revise the system. I think there is a will here to go along with what Mr. Labonge's motion is today on the Rio Bridge in concept. Obviously, if there are issues relative to asbestos and construction, we need to look at that. But I think the costs there would be at least offset by the reduction in cost if we open up the streets and remove the barricades and have not only the police officers who are madding those barricades, but all the other general services outside contractors. We've got an awful lot of personnel out there on the streets that is very, very costly. Those streets are open, whatever we might need to do with the bridge, I'd at least like to see a plan as to when and if and how, if work is being done on the third floor there, that could deal with issues of asbestos or something else that we might not be able to open the bridge immediately. But we need to streamline the process, come up with a more efficient system, less manpower heavy or personnel heavy in the, in the interim. And I guess the question is to ask, you indicated you will bring this back. I'd like to know if we have a date certain whether, for Mr. Pacheco, as to where this can come through committee and back to council. I would like to see it come back within about two weeks, bringing everything together. And I don't see Mr. Pacheco, but I'd like to see if he can verify that that can happen so we can have this resolved and a new plan be ready to be put in place. Mr. Pacheco, I was just asking whether or not this can be through committee and come back within two weeks and bring it all together.
Mr. President, I am just as eager as anyone else on the council to a comprehensive look at what we're doing and spending money here for our security reasons, so yes, within two weeks, we'll get that out of committee.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't think anybody's formally moved that it go to committee, so I want to move that as well. I'm sure we can have a second from somebody. I just have one question right now about the status of the bridge as it is. Does anybody besides security personnel and the staff in the city have access in that bridge?
Not that I know of. The security does have access, and they open the door from time to time for special events, but primarily it's closed.
And, and I don't want to beat up on you guys, I think you've been doing a great job in terms of the parameters that we put forward, but I think, colleagues, we do have to move forward, and we have to move forward quickly, and I know that it was in December that Councilmember Labonge, with strong support, offered something to get us to look at how we can get this place back to being the people's place, and I think that we have to make sure that that moves out of committee. If we can move that out of ITGS in the next couple of weeks, too, like as a part of the report back two weeks from now, to be about how the overall plan as well can be made to perhaps move, remove those barricades, take some of Councilmember Zine's suggestions. You know, I think a lot of us have enjoyed that this is a pedestrian area now, and that's something to think about down the line as we plan around the Civic Center, but at least in the short term, to improve that traffic again. And, you know, Supervisor Yerslawski yesterday himself was talking about how it took him, you know, 40 minutes to get inside here, the building that he used to work in, and certainly he should have no different treatment than anybody else, but it really underscored to me how difficult it is for people to come, those who finally work up the courage or make it here for that first time to testify at City Hall, how many people aren't because of the parameters that we've put up. It is time to roll that back, it is time to open this place up again, and I hope that we can do that in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Okay. Any other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, have a motion to refer the matter to committee. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please. Item number 24, called special, inasmuch as there's a member of the public who wishes to be heard. Excuse me, item 24. Yes. Council calls forward at this time, Mr. Mort Allen.
This is on the budget cuts around the Valley and the city. Let, let me just make a comment. Those of you who read the Hollywood Reporter yesterday, Pine Wood Studios is building a billion-dollar studio in Canada to take all the LA film business, and the wrong message is coming out. I, I certainly amongst everybody else want to get rid of the illegal billboards, but what you're doing is you're driving the rates, I just want you guys to know, the advertising rates have dropped from 7,000 to 2,000 a board, which means that business tax they paid last year, one company of a million and a half is going to go in half. And I think that you're driving business away, including the studios, by saying they can't advertise their product. So all I'm trying to say is keep it out of the newspapers, and because everybody's now saying that, hey, we're going to have less services, because you're getting less money, but you're driving the money away by what's going on in the newspapers right now, which is basically, if none of you don't realize, this all started when both newspapers sold, and there's a big war on who gets the advertising dollar. And so I think we got to go back to being more business-friendly like we were when Rocky was running the business team, and we got to be getting business back, because right now, you're kind of driving it away by saying everybody wants a curly, clean city. Okay?
Thank you. This concludes public comment on item number 24. Members wishing to be heard? Mr. Pacheco.
I was a little confused by the public comment, because I believe it was on the wrong item, but, colleagues, Mr. President, I think we're here today at a point where we really need to show some restraint within how we handle our funds and the budget, and that's why I would ask that you adopt this hiring freeze for all departments and a stringent review for all exceptions to the hiring freeze. As you know, we're doing everything we can, Budget and Finance, working with the CLA, working with the CAO, and working with the mayor's office to avoid any major consequences from this fiscal crisis, so I would simply ask for your support on this hiring freeze.
Other members wishing to be heard? Item 24. Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
That is approved. Forrest Weiss, please. Next item. Item number 26 is called special by Councilmember Garcia. Are we ready to take item 26?
Mr. Chair, there's a report that's been generated and is being Xerox'd and perhaps, oh, you have it, okay. The brink of time.
Is that being circulated? Ms. Miskowski, shall we begin with the staff presentation?
I would like to ask Mr. Merkin and Mr. Deaton, I'm not sure Mr. Fujioka would like to join them at the table, and I see Mr. Miskowski, who's here as well, from the mayor's office, I think it'd be appropriate. Let me just give you a brief introduction, members. This is dealing with the issue of a request that, that we will be asking the council to approve to authorize the mayor to file a request with the Office of State Controller for a review of the issues affecting secession in both the San Fernando Valley and the harbor in terms of the comprehensive fiscal analyses that were put forward. State, the law under which this operates, creates this, this process. Two weeks ago in LAFCO, the LAFCO Board adopted the, what the rules to the process would be only two weeks ago. During that time, the CAO, CLA, mayor's office, city attorney had been participating as to whether or not we should ask for this review, and under the LAFCO procedures, what we should specifically ask, and let me now turn it over to the staff to present the report that, that Mr. Merkin and others have been working on.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Mr. President, members of the council, Fred Merkin, City Attorney's Office, here to talk to you about what's before you. The, the process by which LAFCO is looking at these two proposals, actually, there are three, including Hollywood, the two proposals regarding secession by the Valley and the harbor area, include consideration of what is known as a comprehensive fiscal analysis. That's required by state law with regard to any incorporation proposal, and that same state law provides an opportunity for an interested party to ask the state controller to review that comprehensive fiscal analysis. Technically, the request goes through LAFCO and from LAFCO to the state controller to review the comprehensive fiscal analysis. The state controller has, is required to perform this review within 45 days. We have before you, I, I know this has only been distributed to you just now, but there's a fairly lengthy letter with regard to the Valley request, and I will explain to you what's in that letter as, as I talk here. We also have a list of issues with regard to the harbor area that will take the form of a letter shortly thereafter, after this council's consideration of the matter. Our deadline for filing both of these letters with LAFCO is this, this coming Monday. What we do here is we are asking the state controller to look at a number of fiscal issues related to the fiscal analyses that have been prepared by LAFCO's consultant, Public Financial Management. We're doing so pursuant to certain procedures that LAFCO has adopted with regard to making this particular request. Now, I should tell you that contained within our letter are two protests and something in the nature of a warning. Let me explain what I mean. These procedures, some of these procedures are legally dubious, that we believe they're not consistent with the state law, that are violated the state law, but nonetheless, for purposes of filing these requests, we are complying, but we're doing so under protest. And we're pointing out in this letter where we think those procedures have gone off the road. Just to give you an example, state law requires that when you ask for this kind of review, you have to identify the elements of these, of the analysis you want reviewed and your reasons for wanting the review. Well, LAFCO's procedures go far beyond this. They require us to identify any suspected error or omission. They require us not only to do that, but to present unimposed remedy. They give LAFCO the authority to essentially reject the request if they feel that there will be undue data discovery requirements or something else that could cause failure to meet the 45-day deadline. These are the kinds of problems that we talk about in this letter, and we, we're doing so to make sure that essentially we preserve our position with regard to these particular issues. The second protest we have is with regard to exactly the situation the city of Los Angeles has been placed in by LAFCO's process. True, LAFCO's timeline builds in a period for requesting this review, a period for having the controller conduct the review, but with regard to the Valley, we're dealing with essentially a dead document. By that, I mean, many of you may recall that when the comprehensive fiscal analysis was released on January 9th, it didn't seem to be appealing to anybody. This was the proposal under which the city of Los Angeles would provide all, virtually all the services to the Valley for a period of three years, and that was a three-year period studied, and it didn't seem, it didn't seem to be well-received within City Hall, nor even by the Valley applicant itself. But nonetheless, it is this particular document that we are required, we're given the opportunity to request a review by the controller. So it's, it's manifestly unfair. The CFA seems to have been overtaken by events. You may know that LAFCO staff, two weeks after the CFA determined that there was a, an error with regard to a particular form of taxation, documentary transfer tax, which would mean that over $30 million would not be realized by the Valley City, and it was surmised that that would make the CFA's proposal, the one that's studied by the CFA, inviable. The chair of LAFCO subcommittee on Terms and Conditions bluntly told the Valley applicant to come back with a new proposal, and they said they would, and they did. They came forward on five days later with a dramatically different proposal, a proposal under which, instead of having three years of service, all the services provided by the city of Los Angeles, from the very beginning, certain services would no longer be provided for the Valley City by the city of Los Angeles, and over a span of 18 runs, the services rendered by the city would be phased out. Perhaps some might be performed by contract at the end of 18 months, but begin phasing out of those services. That's a dramatically different proposal in terms especially of its impact on the city of Los Angeles, because as you know, we've made the point that we have centralized costs that aren't dependent upon the geographic size of the city or the population of the city, and... city, and the turning off of the revenue stream from the valley would have catastrophic fiscal effects on the city of Los Angeles with regard to those fixed costs or centralized costs, and in that way, those costs become stranded, and thus we have this expression, stranded cost. The point we're making with regard to that in addition is something of a warning, but a fair warning to LAFCO. If in fact LAFCO is going to take up this new proposal that the valley applicant has been presenting and considering, there's no fiscal analysis of it, and in particular, there's no analysis of its impact on the city of Los Angeles, which is specifically required by statute for the comprehensive fiscal analysis. So in that way, this valley proposal that's come forward blows a gaping hole in the CFA, and we make that point to LAFCO. So those are some of the points we've made, but we make them in the context of presenting a series of questions related to fiscal viability. These are questions that, in working with the CAO's office, put in question issues with regard to the fiscal plan for the valley city. For example, as the CAO's office has noted, there's an unduly low level of reserves planned for, and in today's world, that is not a prudent form of governmental operation. There's an unresolved cash flow situation. There are questionable assumptions on revenue growth that are built into the proposal that is being studied by the CFA. All of these things are issues that we touch upon and we ask the controller to look at. We have concerns related to other governmental agencies that have not been addressed. We've already really talked to some degree about the effect on the city of Los Angeles, but there are other agencies. For example, the removal of the Colanga Pass area from the valley proposal, which is an action that LAFCO took on January 23rd. There are questions with regard to the unincorporated part of the Universal City area and the providing of police and fire services for that area. The city provides fire services for the city of San Fernando, that needs to be taken into account. Vehicle license fees is another thing that's not been studied in terms of its impact, and that impact is statewide. Vehicle license fees are finite, and it's a zero-sum game apparently with regard to the amount of vehicle license fees that are available. Newly incorporated cities get an undue amount or disproportionate amount of vehicle license fees, but in getting that disproportionate amount, it's taken from other cities that would otherwise receive it, and the consequences, the impact on those other governmental entities hasn't been studied. We ask for some validation of the service level that is planned for this valley city. The CFA has schedules attached to it, but there's no backup data attached to it. Presumably, there's some service level that is contemplated, but the adequacy of that level and exactly whether these resources are sufficient to do so needs to be studied. So those are some of the issues that are going to be presented to LAFCO for its consideration.
I hesitate to say I'm not gonna add anything, but just in short, the city attorney has advised that in order to basically make sure that we exhaust our administrative remedies, we need to do this. We have serious problems with certain aspects of the CFA, not the least of which is there are changes being made that are substantive and have been made. Clearly, they're going to put it in question, we believe that, given the city attorney's advice and our concerns about this, this is the appropriate thing to do, and we request a favorable vote accordingly.
Ms. Miskowski?
Mr. President, we have the report in front of us. Mr. Merkin gave us an analysis, and essentially, all we're doing is say, have a third-party review, a third-party reviewing these issues, that the process itself built in, that LAFCO set forward per state law. LAFCO set forward what the process would be. We are in the timeliness of that issue, and although there's a lot of other material here to back it up, it's really questioning the fiscal viability and is it valid, is it sound? Were there errors in the CFA findings, or were there things that were omitted that should have been included? That's sort of the simple version of what this is, with a lot of backup material. So I will move that we authorize the mayor to file a request for review by the state controller on both the San Fernando Valley and the Harbor Area CFA, and let the controller do its work, come back to us, come back to LAFCO if they need more detail. Controller has said how they would process this, what the information would be, what they require, and I think we have consensus today from those in the mayor's office, the CLA, the CAO, and the city attorney to move forward, at least ask for this review, so that is my motion.
We apparently need a motion with regard to the money here. We're already making plans, of course, to prepare the check.
Let me add that, I think there was initially a $25,000 request for payment that the controller made for each request, so that would be the $25,000 payments to the controller and wait back for the controller to tell us what more would be necessary.
Okay.
If I may make a suggested change to the motion, something that did just come up, that I know the motion is for both the valley and the harbor, and it's with regard to authorizing the mayor to send this letter, but because of the legal significance of presenting this letter to LAFCO, I think it's important that the motion be amended, that the mayor is authorized, but if the mayor chooses not to present these letters, that any other city officer who has authority as determined by the city attorney's office is directed to file these letters with LAFCO.
Okay. Any other members wishing to be heard? Ms. Miskowski, do we accept those recommended changes to your motion? Ms. Miskowski says yes. Other members wishing to be heard? If not, then please open the roll on the motion as amended. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Justice Merkin?
Thank you very much.
That is approved. Next time, please.
Mr. President, that is the remainder of the regular agenda. You do have a special meeting agenda on the desk. Did you wish to take public comment at this time or recess into the special meeting?
Let's take public comment at this time. The item on the special meeting agenda, I believe, is a closed session. Item is correct. Okay, public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. The council calls forward at this time Gloria Edgar Madrid.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak this morning. I come before the council to address an incident that happened on the 26th of December where my son, Dietrich Edgar, his apartment was being robbed and he was killed. My son was a graduate of Beverly Hills High School with honors. He attended Loyola Marymount University. He served the Navy faithfully. He was a business person that paid taxes. We own a business in Mrs. Galanta area. We have apartments located in Miss Perry's area. I would like to thank President Padilla for signing the motion that he signed this morning for the reward for my son. I would like to put a face to this name. I realize everything that happened on September 11th. I realize what happened down in San Diego with the child being missing, but this was my only child. The only thing he was doing, he closed our office and he was going home. He was not out in the streets, he was not gang-banging, he was not carjacking anyone. He was a faithful member of First AME Church. We lived in this city since 1984, and we have worked faithfully with all the city council people, we have worked to curb any kind of violence that would happen. We work with the 77th precinct and their community relations department. My son's only crime was, is that he went home too early and he was shot. I would like for the city council and all the council people to realize that we're overseas fighting terrorists, but we have terrorists right here at home, when we cannot go into our own homes and feel safe, that we have to hide, we have to almost protect ourselves inside a barrier. I would like to thank Bernard Parks and the Police Commission because they allowed me to speak to them, but I come before you because I'm a resident of this city. Not only do I pay taxes, but I do everything in this city that I can to work to make sure that Los Angeles is known worldwide as well as within this state, that this is a good place to live. I brought my son here. I brought him to Los Angeles. I did not bring my son here to Los Angeles to get killed. He was only 33 years old, 33 years old in the prime of his life, and he was shut down over stuff for no reason, because he worked with the police, because he worked within the community to assist and to let them know that this is a great city to live in and that we have a wonderful thing to offer people that come here. We say we want more tourists to come. We say we want to raise our families within the boundaries of Los Angeles. Well, let's make Los Angeles safe so that we can have that opportunity to raise our children, to educate our families, so that we have some place to grow on. I know nothing that anyone can do in this building can bring my son back, but I am asking, I am pleading with you today that we work with the police department to put more police out on the street so that the investigations that they are doing, that they can do adequately, they are overworked, they are under manned, and we are a rich city. Let's do something for our own. They say, you know, you can only take care of what's yours. This is my city. I chose to come here. I'm in America. I spent four and a half years in the Air Force, working so that my son would have a good life. I did not have my son that I would have to bury him. No mother should have to go through what I'm going through with. So I plead to you today, and I thank you for the reward to help in apprehension of the person that did kill my son, because that is the only way that I will be able to have some closure, as I state. President Padilla, nothing can bring my son back, but no mother should have to stand before you or live in this city to go through what I'm going through with. These are his friends that have come down today and support. We have the support of the officers from the 77th precinct that are here with me. I beg you, please do everything that you can so that no mother will have to stand before you and go through what I'm going through. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, and please know that our hearts and prayers are with you. If I can make a special request, the clerk, that motion has been brought in, not sure if that's been stamped Rule 16, or if it's possible to take that up as a special today to allow our LAPD officers to utilize that as soon as possible. If that's possible, I'd like to make that change. Mr. Resign.
I see, my condolences to you and your family. I know there's two LAPD detectives behind you, and I'd like to hear from them if there's anything else that needs to be provided to assist you in the investigation, the apprehension of the murderer.
I'll get this reward as soon as possible, as I heard you request would be very helpful, and we appreciate that, so that we can get the community to come forward with some leads in the case.
Is there any problem with SID analysis of DNA or anything, or is that all taken care of?
That's all taken care of.
Okay, so all you need right now is a reward and help?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I first of all want to second your motion to make this a Rule 23 and special item for today's consideration. My condolences to you and your family. I believe that 77th is also in a position where they've had 11 murders in one month this year. Is that accurate, 77th Division?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Colleagues, as you know, I have been pushing very hard on this issue because also in Holbeck Division, we have had 11 homicides, 13, we're up to 13 homicides during this first month and a couple of days of this year, so I agree with you, ma'am, that we need to get more police officers out there on the streets, and we need to stop all the senseless violence that's occurring right now, especially to someone like your son who was here contributing to our community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for today's meeting. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. Chair, on that item, if you're gonna make it a special, the council should take a vote on the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda, and there's an immediate need to act, and based on the fact that the police have asked for that as soon as possible, I think the council could make those findings.
The answer is appropriate if we're ready for special motions. Rule 23 is, Mr. Clerk? That is correct. Then the man we're speaking to and the motion we're referencing shall be considered a special one for today's meeting. Discuss the need to make findings. Anybody wishing to be heard on the findings? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Special one, a reward motion is now before us. Anybody wishing to be heard on the motion itself? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. And thank you all.
Mr. President, motions proposed and referred.
Motion's are posted and referred.
Councilmember's request for excusing counsel attendance. Councilmember Galanter requests to be excused on February 27th to leave at 11:45 a.m. This meets policy for city business.
Ms. Galanter is excused.
And councilmember Weiss requests to be excused on February 19th to leave at 11:45 for city business. This also meets policy.
Mr. Weiss is excused.
Do you wish to recess into the special meeting at this time?
At this point in time, we'll recess the regular meeting and enter a special meeting. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll on special meeting.
President Galanter, Garcetti, Han, Holden, Labaj. Ms. Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ruda, Thomas, Weiss, Saina, Padilla, 10 members present in the court. Mr. President?
We are now on the special meeting agenda, colleagues. I believe it's a one item agenda, a closed session matter. So in conform with California law, the council will now adjourn it to closed session. I ask the guards to please clear the chambers. I ask the guards to please clear the chambers.
Welcome back into open session. Mr. Clerk, item before us, please.
Adjourning the special meeting.
Okay, let's adjourn the special meeting and go back to the regular meeting.
And the regular meeting, the desk is clear.
Are there any announcements? Mr. Labange?
I just want to let the council know, we were graced the last few days for having a member of the Supreme Court of the United States visiting the city, staying at a home in Los Feliz, and I had the opportunity to greet Ruth Ginsburg, the Supreme Court Justice this morning, and send all the greetings and thank her for her work on the Supreme Court. She was staying with the Sloan family of Los Feliz, and it was very nice. Yes, I did. Thank you.
Okay, adjourning motions? Please stand.
Is she speaking anything?
Adjourning motions. Mr. Reyes.
Today, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Jan Landrum, a member of the city family. Jan passed away this past Sunday, February 3rd, 2002, after her long heart fought battle with cancer. Jan joined the Department of Recreation and Parks as a part-time intern in 1967, but due to her health, she reluctantly retired after 34 years of city service. 33 years of which were spent as a director of the Alpine Recreation Center in Chinatown, the smallest and most community-active centers in the city of Los Angeles. She was an original member of the cultural board for our Department of Recreation and Parks. Jan was also one of the original founders of the city's annual Lotus Festival in Echo Park. She started the Asian-American ballet company to provide opportunities for children to build self-esteem. Jan was a very special woman, a mother, a grandmother, and a fighter. She was the epitome of class and culture within the department. She was proud of her Russian heritage and engendered in others, especially the children at Alpine, a respect and pride in their own cultures as well as in the cultural diversity of Los Angeles. She did so through her passion and love of music and the performing arts, especially classical ballet. Jan will truly be missed by all who love her. Jan is survived by her daughter Valerie Grusen, her son Dale Landrum, and her son Bob Landrum, another member of the city family at the Van Nuys Sherman Oaks Senior Center. Her five grandsons, Devon, Robert, Brandon, Ryan, and Eric, and by her partner of many years, Richard Montague, and a very large extended family of friends. The viewing will be held at Forest Lawn Hollywood Hills at 6300 Forest Lawn Drive from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. this evening. Funeral services will also be held at Forest Lawn Hollywood Hills at 2:30 p.m. Saturday. Memorial services will follow at 4:30 p.m. at Alpine Recreation Center, 817 Yale Street in Chinatown. In lieu of flowers, Jan and the family have requested that donations be made to the Alpine Rec Center, the City of Hope, and the American Cancer Society.
All members. Any others? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.